Okay. So with that, I'm going to open the meeting of the Board of Selectmen or Select Board for the Town of Paxton. Today is Monday, April 14th, 2025. It is now 7:19 PM by my clock. And we are here in the training room of the Public Safety Complex. Really?
Hang on Kirk.
All right. Please hold.
All right, any thoughts? Yeah, but it's not gonna work. It's now, he's not gonna hear us.
Yeah.
We usually do, so when we've had all of you issues in the past, we've usually been able to hear the person on Zoom from the computer.
Yep.
And then we've been able to talk this way, but it seems like right now we're having problems.
Can you turn your mic on?
I can, but I wasn't trying to get recorded yet, but I could do that.
So we've had issues in the past. It seems, I'm not sure what the issue is this time and why it's not working and troubling the same way. Right. So usually when we've heard them on the computer and they can't hear us, we've called the person. Right. But it seems like we're having too much echo.
But the echo is completely internal to the system.
We've restarted, we've restarted the entire system. Does anyone in the audience have any suggestions? No.
So.
Cause right now I don't think Kirk can hear us, cause I currently have this unmute.
Um, the only thing I can think of is we could just go forward with it as a Zoom and record the Zoom.
And not worry about broadcasting.
And not worry about broadcasting it. As much as I'd like to broadcast it, it's clearly not working.
Okay. I'm okay with that plan. Carol, are you okay with that plan?
I don't mind.
So.
Things are telling me that it is going to Zoom, is going to YouTube.
But you said every time that I unmute my piece over here, Scott, you said it's echoing too much for people to hear it on YouTube, right?
Probably, because it's going through the board.
So what if we don't record there for the moment? We just record on YouTube, on Zoom? And then we can upload the video as soon as it's done?
You're showing live on YouTube.
That's, that's what.
And do you hear us well when I unmute? Or do you hear us too well?
Can you, can somebody, Jeff, can you check to make sure it's going out on Zoom?
Yeah.
It's going out on YouTube.
It's going on YouTube, yes it is.
Wave your hand, I wanna make sure I got a live feed, Heather, wave your hand.
Is it delayed, so?
Delayed.
How's this sound, though?
Yeah, okay.
Delayed, but.
Delayed, but, yeah, let's go.
Is it on YouTube?
Yeah, it's on.
Is it audible? Like, can you understand what people are saying?
Let me step out of the room, cause it's too much.
Yeah.
Paul said there was an echo last week.
I can hear myself. Do you wanna do jokes with the answer first, then the joke afterwards? Spoiler alert?
He has to hear, he has to hear people talking.
He can hear people talking.
Sounds pretty decent. But what does it sound like when I unmute this?
Sounds okay right now.
Talking, talking.
Sounds good to Kirk?
Sounds good to you, Kirk?
Yes.
Seems pretty good.
Okay.
I think it's good.
All right. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and reopen the meeting, that way we can hopefully cut all of that off, so people don't have to listen to it. Um, let me just get back.
All right, Kirk, can you hear Julie okay?
Good.
Okay. So I'm going to reopen the Select Board meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2025. It is now 7:23 PM by my clock, and we are here in the training room of the Public Safety Complex. Um, we did have some technical difficulties, I think we have mostly resolved them, but I apologize in advance if anybody is having some difficulty hearing. I think we just gotta go a little bit. All right. So, um, so this meeting is being recorded by Zoom as well as livestreamed and hopefully also being recorded via the system here, but because of some system glitches that we seem to be experiencing tonight, I apologize for any reduced quality. Um, so hopefully with the Zoom, we will be able to just move forward and have a decent recording, uh, once this is over, um, in the event that the YouTube recording is not.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So, first order of business is, just pull it up. So we have a announcement from the Select Board which already went out earlier last week with regard to the Town Administrator's position, and it went out originally by an e-subscribe, um, for anybody that is subscribed to announcements from the town via the website. If you have not subscribed to that, I strongly suggest going ahead and getting yourself subscribed to that, you can do it right online. Um, but this announcement for tonight is that the Paxton Select Board, uh, is announcing that Heather Monroe will be completing her contract as Town Administrator and concluding her service to the town on June 30th, 2025. The Board wishes to express its sincere gratitude to Heather for her dedicated service and contributions to the Town of Paxton. We extend our best wishes to her in all of her future endeavors. The Town will begin the process of posting for an interim Town Administrator position in the near future. This is all the information that I can provide on this at this moment, so we are going to go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Okay. So we have consent items, there are six. I'm going to read them as per usual, and barring any objections, we will approve them. So number one is to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on March 24th, 2025. Number two is to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on April 2nd, 2025. Number three is to approve a request from the Paxton Garden Club to place a sign on the Town Common from May 27th to June 7th to advertise their annual plant sale to be held on June 7th. Um, and just a note on that, sometimes with these consent agendas, um, I worry that, um, groups in town may not get as much, um, airtime as we would maybe like them to have. And I attended this garden club event the last two years and, um, purchased some plants that are, um, doing very well on my property now. So, um, it is a great event. I strongly encourage people to head up to the Town Common for that plant sale on June 7th. Um, I'm hoping to be able to find time on my own to send some plants up, um, for the garden club to be able to sell, but we'll see if I have the time to get those together. All right. Number four is to accept the resignation of Savice Cosmitis from the Economic Development Committee effective 4/7/2025. Number five is to approve the request from the First Congregational Church to put up a sign for their May 19th, 2025 yard sale, cookout, and bake sale.
Julia, I think that's the 10th.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I have it on here, it's the 19th.
I know why it's written as the 19th, because the picture they sent said the 19th, but on their form it says the 10th.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, and then, is that, um, in conjunction with the townwide yard sale?
Yeah, which is the 10th.
So it's the 10th? Yeah.
So it's the same one, like, for number six?
Okay. And then, yeah, number six, approve the request from the First Congregational Church to use the Town Common for their, should be May 10th, 2025 yard sale, cookout, and bake sale. All right. Uh, are there any objections to any of the consent items?
No.
None here. Kirk, any objections?
No objections.
Okay. So I'll declare that those are approved. Updates from Town Departments, Committees, and Boards. We have the Lieutenant here, um, in order to put forward some, uh, members of his department. So come on up, Guy. Just go right there.
Really good question, Kirk.
Is it green?
Could you hear me?
Yeah. Just talk, just speak loud, because the PA isn't working in here, or we've got it shut off.
Okay. Lieutenant Guy Bebo Paxton, PD, obviously. I got two for you tonight, two appointments. Um, I'll start out with Tyler Osborne. He's 31 years old, he's from Pittsburgh. He's in, currently in the Army Reserve, where he, uh, is a squad leader. Uh, he's been with us since 2023, his public safety. Uh, he started the full-time academy, at the Holyoke Academy, uh, in December, and he's be graduating on May 9th. Uh, we think he'd be a great fit, and we're requesting him be, uh, appointed as a full-time officer.
Great, thank you. Tyler, thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I appreciate you coming on board. Um, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about yourself that the Lieutenant left off?
No, Lieutenant, good job explaining everything, so.
I did miss out, he does have a, he does have an associate's degree in business administration.
Okay. Great. Well, you sound like you'd be a great fit. Um, I appreciate you applying and coming on board here in Paxton. Um, so any other questions or comments from the Board?
You're just welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kirk, any questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Tyler Osborne as a full-time fire, excuse me, police officer here in town.
Second.
All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
He originally, he originally wanted to be a firefighter, but we poached him.
All right, your next one?
All right, next one, Sergeant Sevastri. All right, most of you know Jay Sevastri, uh, he's our acting sergeant at this time. He's been with the Paxton PD for 24 years, maybe a little bit more, uh, in a lot of different roles. He's done a good job detective-wise, couldn't ask for anything more. I don't think, I think the town got their money's worth from him, out of him, the detective work that he did. Uh, community policing, no question he is our community policing guy. He's done everything we've asked. Um, so with that being said, we had a process, as the Chair knows you were part of, he did very well, did a great job, and he came out on top, and we believe he'll do a good job again in the role of sergeant, so we're requesting that he be put in as permanent sergeant.
Very good. Jay, I had the pleasure of interviewing you myself.
Yes, thank you.
Um, you did a fantastic job. It was, uh, we had two fantastic applicants for that position, and your experience, um, and what we've seen from you in town, including singing to the seniors.
Don't hold that against me, please.
It's very appreciated, um, and so it is my pleasure that you are being promoted to a permanent sergeant.
Thank you.
So, um, just to make it official, I don't think we need to do this, but just to make it official, I'll entertain a motion to, um, appoint Jay as a permanent sergeant for the Paxton Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So, moving on, um, the next item on our agenda was a audit review with Roselli and Clark. Um, we have, um, rescheduled this particular item. It was brought to our attention that the Chair of Finance was inadvertently left off of the communication to the Finance Committee, um, in, uh, when they were notified of this particular agenda item, and so we have opted to reschedule this. Did Torenzio give you any dates yet for when it will be rescheduled for?
He did not, I mean, tomorrow, next three meeting dates, and he was gonna get back to choose which one, that's seven o'clock ahead.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. So we'll wait to hear back from Torenzio as to when that will be rescheduled for. Um, I am going to go ahead and attach some emails that, uh, were sent earlier today, just to elucidate the reasoning behind the, uh, rescheduling. All right. And then, next up, we have an update from the Economic Development Committee. Tony, come on up, or be right there, that's fine.
You want to go up there?
No, that's fine, if you're comfortable there, that's fine.
Nobody needs to see me up close like that.
No one can see you at all.
Exactly. If I go up there, they can, then.
It doesn't, frankly.
I have a, I have a great face for radio. So, um, yeah, so, no, I appreciate the opportunity to give an update, so I'm Tony Dominic, I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. So, we have a lot of different things going on, but I just wanna put it in context, right? Like, what, I don't even think a lot of people know we exist, or what we do, but it's a, I think it's a relatively new concept. I mean, it's been around and off and on in Paxton, but I think we've really ramped it up recently, but, um, I wanna make it clear, like, our biggest goal is really changing our reputation and the culture in Paxton of not being a business-friendly town. Sometimes it hurts to say that, but it's, unfortunately, it is true, to the point, there's contractors, there's plumbers, carpenters, electricians who literally won't do work in Paxton, you know? So, um, as a committee, we've really tasked ourselves with trying to change that, and it's not just all about bringing new business in town. I think some people have an unrealistic expectation that we're going to close the budget gap and bring in a million dollars. If I find a million dollars, I'll definitely get it to you. Um, we'll go that route, but, but, um, I think it's just as important to realize, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to support our current businesses. It's, it's just as dangerous for us to go backwards. Eighty percent of our revenue, approximately, I think, comes from, um, property taxes. That's mostly where it comes from. We need people to want to live here, you know? And that might sound silly, but Lester's doing a lot of big things, um, even Rutland, very active. Um, we have to keep it attractive for people to live here without changing the small-town feel, so we're not trying to do anything crazy that people in Paxton don't want, we're probably gonna have a high failure rate. We're gonna bring things up, we're gonna package them, we're gonna bring them to you, and, um, some of those things are new businesses, some of them are events, like, we're scheduled, we have a, we're working on a networking event for local businesses to, you know, just get people up to Soccer Asylum, hang out, get businesses together, maybe have some banks, vendors in there for them, um, just really get them talking to each other, working together. Those are some of the things we're doing. We're looking at, you know, annual events, maybe a winter event that gets people going into businesses during their slow times, um, some events, I've talked to a few local artists in town, we have a really big art base in Paxton, which, you know, I don't claim to know anything about it, so let the experts handle it. So we reached, reached out to them and said, what's an art festival or something we can do that, um, you know, just naturally bring some revenue into town, people coming into businesses, um, things like that. So there's, there's even been some businesses that we've helped try to get up and running. There's an ice cream shop that's been kind of working on getting up and running, Charcuterie Wu, which is a local business, we helped them find a storefront in town, they signed their lease, they're in the property, you know, now getting that up and running. Um, they do a lot of events at local, you know, restaurants, bars like that, but now they'll have a space people can come into. Um, they're hoping to share that with a bakery or something of some sort down the road, so we have that. But just by doing those things, I've made so many connections, and so many of us have made connections. I've had someone reach out to me about a kind of travel, travel club baseball program. We're just starting to talk to them, that needs to get packaged up, presented to the town, but that has the potential, they wanna turf the Little League field, they maybe wanna bridge the money gap for the lights when we get that going, so some really good things going on. Um, there's another thing on top of that that I can't even really talk about, that I've talked to somebody about, that's a really good revenue generating project that, I mean, would have specific revenue that may go to the police, to fire, to the town in general. Um, so there's a lot of good things happening, but I can't reiterate enough, though, like, when it, we talk about changing the business culture, um, it's not just us, like, we, you know, we can bring these opportunities in, but it requires the Select Board, um, the Town Administrator, and I'd be the first one to say right now, you guys have been awesome partners, like, Brooke has been super helpful, Heather, you've been super helpful, um, Julia, you know, you guys have all, you've really all been super helpful. I haven't bugged you yet, Carol, directly, but I know you'd be super helpful. Um, but it is really important, and, and without getting too specific, I, you know, I just have to bring it up, right? I talked about the ice cream shop, they were hoping to be open now, you know, but they hit the wall of some of our outdated processes that have been a problem, and they're either not gonna open until next year, or maybe not at all now. So, you know, I, without getting too specific, I've forwarded those concerns to Julia, I've forwarded them to Heather, and I'm hoping those, if we can get past those things, we have some really cool, exciting opportunities that will make this an even more fun, cool place to live, generate some revenue, and you just don't know what opportunities are around the corner, but, you know, that's kinda where we are, right? Where we are focusing on maximizing our, you know, business opportunities, um, but also, we really, really wanna get out there and start working with the local businesses that are here now and more. We've been with Soccer Asylum a decent amount, just by the nature of them being new, but, you know, we have Paxton House of Pizza, Paxton Supermarket, I think we have 80 or 90 registered businesses in town, county home businesses, which is crazy. So, yeah, we're working on communicating with them and just, you know, you're gonna see a lot more as this year goes on, but, you know, I can't reiterate enough, if we, if we're bringing these opportunities in, we hit the same walls that have been there forever, there's no point in doing the work that we're doing, so we have to keep working on that. Um, but yeah, that's about it, that's kinda where we are. We do have one open position, technically, I think, two. Um, I redlined the charter, I think, and I gave it to you, Heather, so I don't know, we'll have to figure that out, cause I kinda redefined one of our positions as a hybrid business owner resident, but with Sav leaving, we do have one open position for a business owner, so if anybody knows someone interested in that, um, would love to have them. But, that's it, that's all I got.
Great. Thank you.
I appreciate all your support, all of you guys have been awesome.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I know we've talked a few times, um, about this, and, you know, what I have continually reiterated is, yeah, it's, it's probably not the, you know, the holy grail in terms of, you know, get generating revenue for the town, however, um, it is about quality of life for the people who live here, and being able to provide them with things that they'd like to go to, and I love that thought process around having an artist festival. Um, so, you know, Paxton does have a, a large artistic community, um, there is a Facebook page, the Paxton Artist Group, um, and, uh, so, you know, I'd love to involve them more and just sort of try to generate some of the excitement around what it means to live in Paxton, to be here, and make people wanna stay here, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, I'm not an expert on that, so I've reached out to the artist people that I know, and they, their ideas are awesome.
Yeah.
You know, and they're easy to get off the ground, and if they happen to get some people here, generate some, you know, people going into the other businesses, or maybe even wanting to move here, you know? That's, that's what we need, so.
And I did see a Facebook post recently, I wanna say it was Sav that may have posted it, um, asking, what are you in Paxton, what kinda things would you like to see for events?
Yeah.
And I thought that post was phenomenal, so I love all of those ideas. Um, so, you know, certainly let me know if there's any way that I can help. Um, I know the roadblocks you talk about is, and, you know, we're gonna work on that. Um, but outside of that, like, even just helping to try and move some of this stuff forward and organize it and make it happen, I think, it'd be huge.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. We're just, we keep trying to get buttoned up and, you know, get, um, again, this baseball one's when it came up recently, somebody just walked into town, and I think they talked to Heather, they talked to someone else, so it's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
Um, that could benefit us if it's packaged the right way. So that'll go to the Economic Development Committee the next time we meet, and then we'll just, you know, vote on it, and if we decide to move it, um, forward, we'll go through whatever the proper channels are there, but, um, no, it's a lot of good things going on, so.
Great.
Yeah.
I thank you for all the work that you're doing on this.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Good. Thanks for coming in.
Yes.
Giving us this update.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, under new business, first up is to review the new employee health insurance rates and opt-out plan for FY '26.
Marry me.
I'm gonna sit next to Donna.
The letter, right?
Oh, you want me to review the letter?
Put it in next to you.
Thanks, Donna. All right, good evening. Fire Chief Mike Pringettori, I'm also the elected Chair of the Insurance Advisory Committee for the employees, please. Thanks to Donna here, who's the clerk, uh, does a phenomenal job in, um, getting us to where we need to be, and she really has all the information, she opted to talk tonight, but I couldn't let her, uh, do this on her own.
I rattled the paper.
All right. I rattled the paper, thank you. Not leaning on your stuff. Um, so overall, our rates have, uh, have seen an increase of 13.99%, uh, and they're gonna start seeing that around July 1st of 2025. We did go through some, um, options with the committee. Um, the hardest part here is, uh, obviously balancing the expense of the plans, not only to the employees, but to the taxpayers as well. Um, so we opted to go kinda back with the same, uh, plan that we're using, utilizing now. Unfortunately, like I said, it's a 13.99% increase, but overall, um, from what we've seen with area towns and even the school district, it's actually one of the lower increases that we've had, so, uh, in the area, so we're kinda fortunate there. Um, and obviously with chronic healthcare conditions and aging population and low Medicare or Medicaid reimbursements, um, one of the things, though, that we did talk about is changing the plans in the future from, right now, we offer a single and a family, uh, going to a three-tier system in the future, which would be a, a single, a, a single plus one, so married couple, and then, obviously, a family plan. We opted not to do that as a group, uh, this year because the impact on the family plan, and just the way the rates are calculated out, uh, the families would have had a $70 increase per month in their premiums. So, um, it is something that, you know, we wanna bring to your attention this year as well, to start planning out probably for the next three years, three to five years, because our, our demographics with our employees, the ages are, they're changing, right? We don't have a lot of young, uh, employees anymore, they're getting up to the point where a lot of their kids have now left the nest, and they're looking to reduce costs somewhere, so, uh, that's just something to keep in mind. Um, other than that, um, what else do we wanna cover here, Donna, before I discuss the opt-out?
That's pretty much it. The dental will see a two and a half percent increase, the vision will not have an increase at all, that's gonna stay the status quo, right where we're at. Um, there have been a couple enhancements that were added to the plan this year for the employees, uh, there are some incentive eligible procedures that went from 22 to 47 procedures now that are included within the health plan. Um, they've also got an additional $50 allowance going towards the vision. It used to be 150 a year, that's now going up to 200 a year. Um, so I think pretty much on the healthcare side, that is what we're looking at. So we're just looking to stick with the plans that we have, 13.99% increase to get us through for the next year. Um, as Mike said, we'll start revisiting other options going forward and putting a plan together, um, because they did inform us, obviously, that it's just gonna keep heading in that upward trajectory, um, so we need to start planning ahead for that. Um, so the only other thing that the committee has is opt-out, so if you wanna.
Yeah, I'll take the opt-out. So currently, we offer, um, in opt-out rate to employees who decide to either not take the health insurance or go on to their spouses, and in Massachusetts, you can't just not take the health insurance. Um, so currently, what we do, um, is we give them, um, a stipend every month. Um, so an 80% on an individual plan, um, gets $280 per month to opt out of the insurance. Um, we'd like to increase that to $336 per month. Um, it is still quite a bit of savings to the town for the, for the employee to opt out of the insurance. Um, same thing on the 80% family to individual, so if, uh, you know, you're close to retiring age, or your spouse is retired and gone on to Medicare, you can get on the individual plan, um, that would go up to 336 a month. Um, and then, on the 80% family to opt out would be 800. And then, on the eighty percent family to opt out, would be eight hundred and forty dollars a month. So each one of those, for the year, totals four thousand for the top two plans, eighty percent individual, family to individual, and then ten thousand eighty dollars to the family. So if someone opts out onto their spouse's plan and the town doesn't have to pick up that tab, it's still a substantial savings, I think somewhere around eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars per year to the town, which is huge. And we have, obviously, employees that are on seventy-five percent. So that would increase their contribution individual would be two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month. Family to individual would be another two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month. And then seventy-five percent family would be seven hundred and twenty dollars a month. So annually, it's three thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for the individual and family individual, and then eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars for...
So just for the people at home that might be watching this, when you say eighty percent, you're referring to their cost share of the...
Yeah, the cost share, eighty, twenty. It's, there's, there's fewer employees on that eighty, twenty. It's more of the veteran employees, been over ten, fifteen years.
Yep.
Most people are seventy-five, twenty-five, or seventy, thirty.
Yep.
On the cost split. And then the seventy, thirty, that goes to two hundred and forty dollars a month for the individual and the family to individual, and then six hundred dollars a month to get off the family. That's two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for the individual and family individual, and then seven thousand two hundred dollars to go family to no insurance from the town.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions for Mike from the board?
No, I think it's good that we are reviewing the proposed rates for the opt-out, because we went for a long time without opting them. You've got to keep them current, otherwise it's...
Yeah.
You get anybody in.
And we hope, not that we want to see people get off the health insurance, but...
But if there's an alternative...
Yep. If there's an alternative and we can save the town money...
Yeah. You're still getting insurance elsewhere and gaining benefit for it.
Yep. Kirk, any questions?
More questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. I have no questions. So with that, is there a motion to accept the insurance rates as presented by the Insurance Advisory Committee for FY26?
Still moved.
Second.
All, any further discussion?
No.
Aye.
All in favor, Kirk?
Aye. Yeah, you need to talk louder, Julia, sorry.
Sorry, Kirk. I'm like trying to talk into the microphone, but you're probably not hearing me from the microphone. So, okay, so Kirk says aye. Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. All right.
Thank you, committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next up is to sign the warrant for the annual town election. Heather, do you have that?
This is wrong.
Now?
Oh, this one.
It should be...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Need the corrected one. With the ballot number.
That's good. I would just, I think we can always, we can always do a digital signature like we did before if we need to. So just read it the correct way.
Okay.
Can we change it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So on the ballot, we have a seat for the Select Board for three years, another seat for the Select Board for two years, and a third seat for the Select Board for one year. We have a three-year position on the Board of Assessors. We have a three-year position on the Board of Health. We have a three-year position on the Cemetery Commission, three years for, or two three-year positions for the Library Trustees, a three-year position for the Municipal Light Board, five-year position for the Planning Board, a one-year position for the Planning Board, a three-year position for Recreation, a three-year position for Bay Path School Committee, a one-year position for the Wachusett Regional School District Committee, a three-year position on the Water Board, and a one-year position on the Water Board. And then there will be one question on the ballot, which will read, "Shall the Town of Paxton be allowed to assess an additional one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the town and Wachusett Regional School budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025?" With that, is there a motion from the Select Board to sign the warrant for the ballot, for the election?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And we'll sign that, either digitally or corrected version. Okay. We have April licenses. Do you have the packet? Excellent.
They're in the packet, Julia.
There we go. It's so hard to flip back and forth.
Yeah.
That's all right, I got it.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah. All right. So license renewals for April, I'm going to read them off, and we will vote them in bulk and then sign after we're all done tonight so that the people at home don't have to watch that riveting television. If they're even able to watch it tonight, we don't know. We'll find out, I guess. All right. So we have for weekday soft drinks, Paxton Marketplace Incorporated, Soccer Asylum, Theo's and JLC Donuts Incorporated, DBA Duncan Donuts. For fruit and vegetable stands, we have How's Farm and Garden LLC. For jam, syrup, bread, candy, seeds, and honey, we have How's Farm and Garden LLC. For nursery, stock, and florist, we have three, How's Farm and Garden LLC, Sterling Greenery, and Robinson's Greenhouses. And for weights and measures, we have How's Farm and Garden LLC, Paxton Marketplace Incorporated, and Conroy's Farm Stand. That's the new category, now that we are beyond five thousand people in town for a population. So is there a motion to approve the license renewals for these businesses?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. All right. Next up, we need to discuss a new date for the annual town meeting. As you are aware, the annual town meeting was previously scheduled for April 5th, excuse me, May 5th. And that has been postponed pursuant to our joint meeting with Finance that occurred last week.
The second.
Two weeks ago, nearly two weeks ago, the second. So we had tossed around a date that day, which was the first Monday after all of the other towns in the region had their town meetings, which was June 2nd. Unfortunately, our town clerk and moderator are not going to be available until June 16th, would be the first Monday that they're available following that. So that would be my suggested date, but any further comment is appreciated.
I don't see a problem with that.
Kirk, any thoughts on town meeting date?
I have really no comment. I mean, it's going to be what we can make it, and we're just going to have to make it work.
I agree. All right. That's, it seems like that's the earliest date that makes sense for us. So I'd suggest we go with that. So I will entertain a motion for...
Voted, right?
Correct. It is after all of the other towns. The last town is Holden.
All right. Yeah, well, then I'm good with that.
Yep. Okay. So with that, is there a motion for the annual town meeting to be set for June 16th? Monday, June 16th, and that will be at Anna Maria College.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And Donna, no, we confirmed no issue with Anna Maria for that date, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. Number five under New Business is the Wachusett Regional School District Maintenance Agreement for FY26.
So this is a regularly occurring maintenance agreement for the school at this point.
Heather, Mike?
Wachusett? Am I echoing? Okay. Wachusett at this point asked if we just do one year. They're still trying to get a handle with the administration. This is the first time this has come up. So this is the maintenance agreement. This is an amount of money that they pay the town each year. We put it aside into a special fund. This is essentially, the school raises our appropriation by this amount. They then, you know, we pay them, they then pay us, right? And then we put in a special fund. So this isn't, you know, we don't get a coupon off of anything. This is literally, you know, money coming back to the town to be put aside for some pieces. Specifically, the amount we put aside is actually usually that second amount down there, not so much the first one. It's a smaller amount, and that's to put aside for the septic system in case we ever have to replace the septic system at the school. So the top amount is more for our usual costs, right? So if we have to plow, we have to maintain any of the roads down there. There's usually, every town usually has a certain agreement for that piece. It looks a little bit different in regional agreements than it does in districts. And how they do is they pretty much calculate it per school, the number, and then that's assessed. So if you have two schools in your town, you get double that amount. You have one school, you get single.
Okay. So I know this question has come up before. How do they come up with the number that they give us?
They increase the number they had last time.
Okay.
They, they don't really have any rhyme or reason to that calculation. In certain towns, especially where you have a non-regional school district, it's actually very specific math, where you figure out the cost, the number of hours, the value of the services and so forth, and it's calculated. This, they've traditionally just gone on the historic number and then increased it by a certain percentage each year.
Yep.
They would like time to actually look into it a little bit more detailed before they do another three-year FY27 moving forward. That's why they're opting, and they asked all the TAs. We all said we were perfectly fine with the one-year maintenance agreement for just FY26.
Okay. All right. So they're looking for one year as opposed to three years so that they can look a little bit more closely at that number and make sure that they're, ideally, make sure that there's a rhyme and a reason for that number. So I'm glad that they're looking into that. That's a question that's come up a number of times in the past. I think one of the explanations that we had previously, Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, was that it was originally based on the size of the parking lot.
They used to actually bill for snow days and everything. The DPW used to bill the school. And I think they looked at all that, that amount and the size of the parking lot and so forth. So, yeah.
Right. Yep.
This was an easier method than, than that.
Right. It's, this is certainly easier than that, right? So I'm glad they're looking into it. That's great to hear, that they're going to hopefully come up with something for next year that will have a little bit more meat and potatoes behind it. But for this year, are we okay with this number of, it's twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents plus two thousand, one hundred and ninety-five, which was the amount for the septic system?
I'm okay with it.
I am too. Kirk, any questions or problems with the maintenance agreement for one year?
No questions or comments, outside of the fact that Carol and Julia, can you look at wherever the sound is supposed to be transmitted from when you're speaking?
Yeah. So, I know you can't see this, Kirk. Heather has like an external speaker. And she's gonna, she's gonna move her, her table a little closer to us so that...
I'm doing all right, but the struggles are real.
Yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. So we're going to try and speak a little louder, Kirk, and you're a little closer to us now, so hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Yep. All right.
All right.
So if everybody's okay with the maintenance agreement as it sits for this year, knowing that they are looking at it and will hopefully have something maybe a little bit more robust for us next year, is there a motion to approve the maintenance agreement and sign it for the school district?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay. Let me get back to my agenda. All right. So under Old Business, we have the override discussion and/or presentation as available. Heather was very kind to throw together a quick overview for us on her very first day back from vacation. And so we have a brief presentation for you on what's going on with the budget, and hopefully this will be helpful for some folks. So take it away.
Thank you, Julia. All right. So FY26 budget overview. For, for those who may have been following along, on April 2nd, the Select Board and Finance Committee met together. FINCOM had finished its review of the FY26 budget. And at that point, they looked at the budget as a whole, what the deficit was, and they came to a decision on an override that was discussed very briefly a few minutes ago as it appeared on the warrant for the election. So this is just meant to be a brief, high-level overview. When we conclude tonight, we will put this on the website with all of the other materials and also remind everyone where you can go to find more information. So to begin the FY26 budget process, how did we get here? So in October of 2024, we did a kickoff working session with the Select Board and the Finance Committee. This is the first time we did a working session, a working session let alone with both boards at the same time. It was a very productive session. We reviewed the current financials. We looked a little bit at the forecasting, and Finance Committee and Select Board also discussed together where things were going for the FY26 budget and recommendations. A couple deliverables came out of that meeting. The first deliverable was the first time that we actually wrote a letter jointly, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Town Administrator to the school, putting the school on notice that the request was to keep their budget at no more than two and a half percent of what the town was assessed the year prior, and that if it were going to exceed that amount, that the amount that was over the two and a half percent of the assessment would be put forward as an override. So that was the first time we sent that letter. In years past, the Town Administrators and the Town Manager and Holden would get together and they would look at their budgets and come up with a number and put that forward to the school and ask the school to keep those numbers. This year, we took a different approach. We also had looked at, last year, we had a little bit of a challenge when we were calculating our override as to how we would come up with the school number and its contribution. So this made it a lot easier and a lot cleaner when we went to our meeting on April 2nd to figure out what number, what amount of the school budget contributed in this case to the need for an override. After that, we also had a second deliverable, and that was budget guidance. So that went out to all of the departments, and the budget guidance was to keep your bottom-line budget within two and a half percent of the FY25 approved number. With that, there was always an opportunity that anyone who needed something beyond, and in many cases, departments did either need something to continue functioning, continue providing services, or even restore services that had been previously cut from FY24 to FY25. They used a form, in this case, we called it the Out-of-Guidance Form. It was just the name of a form to be able to collect things that weren't within the two and a half percent. And those were included as one of the outcomes or deliverables of that joint working session. And then the last piece was a draft budget calendar to try to figure out where we were going and how we were going to get there this year. After that, we had submissions of the budgets. Everything was got, was delivered over to the Finance Committee. Once the budget was compiled, we had all, everything in one Excel workbook that I think was over a hundred and something pages. And we also had a compilation of all of those out-of-guidance or the additional needs of the departments that just didn't fit within that two and a half percent together. Finance Committee met from January through March to review all of those requests, both the regular departmental requests as well as those additional things, again, that they need. They just didn't fit with that, in that two and a half percent. Capital met most of the time the same weeks on a different day. Then we had the Joint Finance Committee Select Board meeting, where they reviewed the deficit and the override vote, and that was on April 2nd. The next steps from here are going to the annual town election on May 5th, and now annual town meeting on June 16th. And then after that, we hope to have an improved budget for FY26. High-level budget summary, so the proposed budget revenues are sixteen million, two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Expected expenses are seventeen million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, resulting in a deficit of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Of that, the deficit split, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one seventy-seven to the town, and the school, four eleven, seven ninety-one. Again, we calculated this in reverse by looking... Again, we calculated this in reverse by looking at what the school number was that exceeded the 2.5% increase in their assessment. That's how we got to the $411,791. We then took that out of the deficit to figure out the town share of the $718,177.
And Heather, that deficit number is after the application of free cash and ambulance receipts to the budget, correct?
Yes, this is after all of our revenues are put in the pot. This is what we don't have, where we're short in order to cover what we have for necessary expenses. All right, revenues, call this the great prediction. All right, so how do we calculate the estimated revenue? So we look, we have four sections on our revenue sheet that we look at. One is the tax levy, one is the state aid and state assessments or charges, one's local receipts, and one is the other funds. So the tax levy, which makes up the bulk of what we base our budget on, mostly comes from real estate and property taxes. Most of this is a very clear mathematical calculation. We take last year's total tax levy plus last year's 2.5% increase plus new growth. We add that into one number. We multiply that by 2.5%. We add new growth for this year. And then we also are adding our ongoing debt or capital exclusions for either the town or the school. And we always have that road stabilization piece that's always up there as well. And that's always gaining 2.5% each year. So you take those numbers and then you have a variable, which is this year's new growth, right? This is estimated by the assessor's office. Each year, they tend to be, they try to be conservative because they wanna make sure they actually hit the number they're estimating. This is new growth that's predicting for after June 30th, right? Everything we capture of new growth has to be done by June 30th of 2025. And then that's calculated through FY, for FY26 budget. So we're kinda guessing where we're gonna land. We don't know if we're actually gonna land there, but we really hope we do. So this year, that estimated number was about $15,000 less than last year's $80,000. And at the end of June of last year, and by the time we did the recap in the fall, we were only in the 70s. So we didn't hit that last year's new growth number. With that, the assessors took a little bit more conservative approach. FINCOM supported it. We went with a lower figure this year.
Can you explain, Heather, for anybody who might not know what, what becomes new growth?
Yes. So new growth, what happens is, you know, best examples, you buy, build a new house. You add a garage, you build an addition, right? You do some substantial remodel to your house. It usually doesn't mean roofs or windows or siding. It's usually something a lot larger than that. When you do those pieces, you're adding real estate value. Then that real estate value is multiplied by that tax, the tax rate for the town, and that's the calculation of additional taxes we're going to get next year as a result. So that's how new growth comes about. Sometimes it even comes about in personal property, right? Personal property, the oddest term ever, has nothing to do with any personal matters. It's, it's actually business property, right? Easiest way to think of it, I always find, is, you know, you go into a hair salon and there's a bunch of different chairs there, right? All the property, anything they have that's working towards their business counts towards it. You go to a restaurant, chairs and tables and equipment, and all those pieces count towards that. So those pieces altogether are considered new growth. The last piece in the tax levy is actually a deduction, right? It's the overlay. It's a five-year average based on the state rules and regs. And it is the amount that the assessors are able to keep aside for any abatements they have to do, any exemptions. Anytime someone is going to get money back at the end of the day, they need to have enough to cover it. Sometimes we don't always have things that are resolved within the same fiscal year, so they might have to hold some from the past years to make sure they have enough. And again, the state requires it to be a five-year average, so you can't go less than that number. So that's actually a deduction off of the rest of what you have for the tax levy. So that's the chunk of where our revenue comes from. Now, as we go further down, the next two are a little bit more variable. This one is very highly variable, and this is the state aid and charges. It used to be at a certain point where you could estimate what we were gonna get. It used to be, you know, that solid 2.5% or unrestricted governmental aid, which is the chunk, used to be 3%, right? When Governor Baker was here, he's like, you get 3%. This is the number we're going, we're gonna go 3%. If state lottery goes well, that's the number. And then things changed and the number hasn't gone that high again, right? This year, how it works is, just like every year, you start with the governor's budget, then you go to the House, the Senate, the ways, the joint ways and means, and then you get to the final approved budget that's signed by the governor. So between now and then, things can change. Sometimes last year, like we saw some numbers go up, some numbers go down. Same thing happens with the school side on Chapter 70, which is sometimes why we end up getting a little bit back at the end of the year because they end up reducing their budget because they got more state funding. So we'll see how that pans out. But it's important to note that this is very much subject to change as the state budget moves along in the process. We often see that, right? If we have an earlier town meeting, our numbers might not be as accurate as if we have a later town meeting when we can adjust those numbers one way or the other. The next piece, which is still a decent chunk, but not as big as the state aid, is our local receipts, right? You have motor vehicle...
Excise.
Motor vehicle excise. You have your interest, you have your town clerk fees, you have your select board fees, you have your building permits. All those pieces together are local receipts. We generally estimate these very conservatively, but over the past couple of years, because our budget has been so tight, we've done conservatively high estimates, right? The majority of them have been pretty close to where we end up handing out. We've lucked out the past couple of years. We've apparently done pretty well with bank interest when interest rates went back up. We've done pretty decent with motor vehicle, although we're kind of very much outside of our norm. So we'll see if that continues or if that goes back down. So regardless, we, we've been trying to be much closer to those numbers. But it's really important to remember, if we get too close, you know, local receipts or especially motor vehicle are one of those areas that generate the most free cash for us. So if we're so tight that we're not, we're up against the number and we come in almost precisely, we're not generating any free cash on the revenue side. And that's one of the biggest side places where we generate free cash. The last bucket of funds we have is the other additional funds. We currently use two pieces of them. One is free cash. We use 100% of our free cash. We've been doing this for a number of years. This year, we have $500,000 in free cash that we're using to offset our budget. So we have the taxes, we have the state aid, the local receipts, and then $500,000 of free cash. In addition to that, we've been higher the past couple of years in the amount we've used, but we're using $400,000 of ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation. So once we have everything together, we're using $900,000 between free cash and ambulance receipts, and we still have a deficit of $1,130,000. Okay. Any questions on revenues?
Nope.
Okay. Expenses, the cost to provide town services. So what is in this? So what's included? Contractual obligations, fixed costs, level services with a few exceptions. Where you placed a lot of cuts from FY25, right? And tried to restore things from FY24. Whether that was trainings, whether that was staffing for the police department, whether that was additional supplies for the DPW, that was line painting, that was materials to work on the road, that was putting in, back in the guardrail replacement that has been out of it for a number of years, right? It's also starting to return people back similar to where they were in hours. When we first started with the building commissioner a few years ago, it was 19 hours a week. Then we reduced it to 15 hours. Now it's a little less than that, so we're trying to bring that back up. The next piece is the beginning IT replacement program. We haven't done this in quite some time. We generally just try to get lucky and do one or two devices a year or hope that we can get a grant for them. But unfortunately, computers don't last forever. And they usually have a lifespan, four to five years is pretty much pushing the life of a computer. And we have about 35 devices. So over time, the pieces need to be replaced. And this gives us the ability to actually add that in and start taking care of that, especially with cyber being one of the major concerns, even on the insurance side of things as we keep moving forward year to year. The last piece, I call it adding a map subscription. So anyone who might have watched the last couple FINCOM meetings might have heard us talk about something called NearMap in PushPin. So this is something that a lot of assessors uses, I'll try that again. A lot of assessor departments have been using throughout the state as well as many other departments have benefited as well. It's a one-year, it's costly, it's one cost each year. It's unlimited number of users for it. But what it does is it pretty much pays back in dividends, right? It's one of those things, you spend money to make money concept. You're purchasing this map and it actually allows the assessor's office to capture and figure out what has changed on a property, right? So if there's a property they haven't been able to access for whatever reason, they can see, oh, look, there's an addition over here. Oh, look, there's something else here I didn't know about. It allows other departments, which, I'm sorry, also allows us to capture new growth that we wouldn't normally capture. Other towns, when they've used this, many of the assessor's offices have said that in a very short period of time, after having this tool, they're actually able to capture new growth that exceeds the amount of the cost of the annual subscription. In addition, there's a piece called PushPin. So PushPin, they only allow it to use with NearMap. They partner very closely together. And it allows you to generate a CSV file for a particular street. So you can actually see from one year to the next what the changes are in that property. So it can tell you and you can pinpoint and save yourself time rather than just sending, the old way would have been to send an assessor out and hope they saw things from the street that they didn't notice before, right? So it helps with effectiveness and efficiency, also brings some money back to the town. It's also amazing tool for all the town departments, including, you know, fire can plan on incidents. The building department can figure out what someone actually is doing. They can look at setbacks. Conservation can see where different parts of water and other parts of the property are. So it, it is a really amazing tool. But it's important to outline because those things are a little bit outside of, you know, what we had before. What's not included outside of that, there's no expansion of services. There's no stat, new staff beyond the return to the FY24 staffing levels and there's no departmental wish list in this. All right, so budget drivers approximately $1 million. So these are costs of the budget that exceed $10,000 increase from the year prior. Some of these are just larger numbers and some of these, just because of what they encompass, are gonna be bigger. So the first is $572,000 for the Wachusett Regional School District. The second is the DPW, 134K. Again, this included, you know, anything that exceeded the 2.5%. So 2.5% is in here, so there's an increase beyond that 2.5%. But it also includes, you know, the line painting and the guardrail and return of asphalt and other materials that they haven't had before and equipment and pieces that they gave up last year with the reduction so that they can return to providing the most effective and efficient service to the town. The police department, part of this is, you know, just their annual regular contractual cost. But outside of that, it's about $90,000 of it is to reinstate an officer position that they had cut, including the cost of the officer and the cost of the contractual obligations that go along with the officer. Fire department has, you know, additional training costs in there that they had cut previously, additional supplies, materials and so forth. So very similar, you know, some of it's contractual obligations and some of it's stuff that they had to cut the year prior in order to get the budgets down. Baypath, $56,000 increase, which is 9.74%. Retirement, 4.25% at $37,000. So retirement, the biggest thing, we use Worcester County Retirement System. And like many of the retirement systems in the state, they have to be fully funded by a certain year. I think it's like 20, 30, give or take. So they're trying to essentially do all of their other post-employment benefit piece and get it funded. So our numbers are a lot higher than what they used to be a number of years ago. And hopefully by the time we get to that point, the increases will start decreasing a little bit, is the goal. IT services, $24.5,000 or 24.23%. As we talked about, you know, a good portion of that is the computers, but it also includes about $10,000 for that mapping system I just talked about, NearMap as well as PushPin. Regional dispatch, so those who might have been following the past couple of years, each year, we were able to get state 911 funding to reduce our contributions to the regional dispatch system. Last year was, in FY25, the year we're currently in, was the last year the state contributed to that. They contributed at 25%. We saw 75% of our actual assessment. This year for FY26, we now have 100% of the assessment. That is our responsibility. And with that, our increase from last year went up $16,000 or 15.12% for us. The last piece is town insurance. You know, that's the general liability insurance, that's unemployment, that's injured on duty, that's workers' comp, 6.73%. When we talked to Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency or MIA, they advise us that, you know, insurance for everyone throughout the country is going up because of everything. And things that happen in one part of the country, like natural disasters and so forth, affect other parts of the country with the insurance rates. So these budget drivers here exceed $1 million. So again, as I mentioned, the DPW, police and fire aren't particularly in and of themselves budget drivers, they're just larger budgets. So when they're over 2.5%, it's just a larger number. So that's why they show up here. Other departments could very well be much higher than that percentage, but the increase is still under $10,000 because it's such a small department. Any questions on this?
Nope.
All right, so override information. So the override amount is $1,130,000. So if you remember, the deficit was $1,129,000 and some change. The Select Board made the executive decision to roll, round up to an even number of $1,130,000.
This was a $42 roundup, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it was, it was very minimal. This number only covers the town's deficit, right? This does not include anything, like last year's conversation. This is not reducing free cash. This is not putting money into reserves. This is not adding anything for later. This is literally covering the amount that is the gap between the revenues, including all of the free cash and all of the ambulance receipts we're using already to offset, and the current number for the expenses, what we need to make the town whole and continue providing the same services we currently provide. The second piece here tells you that it's approximately $166 per quarter to the average single-family house. If your house value is about $507,000. That's the average single-family house in Paxton right now, $507,000. So it'd be $166 per quarter or per tax bill. In order for this to pass, it has to pass the ballot question on May 12th selection and annual town meeting, which is on June 16th. For more information, the town's website, FY26 budget page has a lot of it. If you wanna watch Finance Committee meetings, if you wanna see packets of information handed out specific meetings, if you wanna see how the budget has evolved from the beginning of FINCOM's meetings to the end, you can see them all there. Out-of-guidance materials, all are there. The most updated, where everything finalized, is there as well. If you're interested in the informational session, we will be holding one on May 5th at the Paxton Center School. Do we have a time on that?
7:00 PM.
Okay. 7:00 PM for that. And we'll put out some more information, just to remind people that's up and coming. And lastly, in preparation for tonight's meeting, we did create a new email that right now goes to Donna and myself. Donna's gonna be super excited. Info@townofpaxton.net. So if you have any questions about the budget right now and you're not sure where to send them, please send them here so that we centralize them into one location. Info@townofpaxton.net. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, so I did ask Heather if there was a way that we could funnel information so that if there is, are questions related to the budget, that we can make sure we try to address those questions when we have the informational session on the 5th. So that's why we created that and hopefully that will help. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Heather? All right. All right, I have Select Board correspondence. Did have a thank you note. Dear Chief Pingitorey and Paxton firefighters, a big thank you to the Paxton Fire Department and your colleagues and the Leicester Fire Department for your prompt and professional response to the fire that burned two or more acres of our lawn on Saturday, March 15th. We were very lucky and we are very grateful to all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. My personal knowledge of that particular situation is that, that was a brush fire, unfortunately, that had escaped from a neighbor's property and had actually gotten as close as, you know, two feet to this individual's barn. And so it was a, a good stop by the Paxton Fire Department to make sure that that didn't extend to the structure. So I'm really happy about that and he was very kind to send in a thank you note, so. So I'm really happy about that, and he was very kind to send in a thank you note, so appreciate that. All right, next up, we have the Town Administrator's Report.
I'm going to pass on that this evening.
Okay, very good. And anybody for public comment, Donna?
Peter?
That was a maybe. Just a quick question. Why, why did we choose to put the 2.5% of Waukesha's assessment and not Waukesha's overall budget? So in other words, my question is, if Waukesha's budget had gone up zero, what would have been the percentage increase for Paxton? Do we know?
So I don't know the answer to that question. If, but if Waukesha's own budget had been level funded, that's what you're asking, right? What would our assessment have been or what would it have changed? I don't know the answer to that, right? Because that's determined by this formula, the state formula. We chose to go with 2.5% on our assessment because really all we're worried about is what our town is, and so if we, if our town is being assessed a certain amount of money, right, for the, the town's share of the regional school district, it's that number that factors into our budget. So regardless of what the actual school district's percent increase is, we're only really concerned with our own assessment, and so that's the number that hits us and that's the number that we want to...
Was there any pushback from the school?
Not that we heard, no. I mean, that doesn't mean that it didn't exist.
It just really took it out of their hands.
Yeah. It just didn't come, you know, our direction, so...
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Heather, for going through that summary, and you said all the details are being posted online. That has all the line items, revenue, and expenses?
Yes, so it's on the, for anyone who's listening, the FY26 budget part, it's up at the top when you go to the town's website, and then breaks it down into basic information, approved budgets, Finance Committee history, capital improvement information, all of those pieces are all outlined.
Just one question, just to confirm, the override, the 2.5% override itself is just $166 per quarter for...
So how in, how any taxes get calculated, right? We have a tax rate, which is this fun mathematical equation. Essentially, they take all of the valuations of the town and the total amount of taxes that the town can collect, and then they break it down to figure out what that tax rate is, and then based on your valuation, so if your value is $500,000, you multiply that times whatever the tax rate is. Doing an override, or in our case, it's a permanent override, right? So forever be there, we're increasing the amount of taxes we can collect by $1,130,000 for FY26. When we do that, that number then breaks down to each of those, to the tax rate, which then you multiply by the evaluation of your property. So in Massachusetts, according to the Division of Local Services, they believe that the average single-family home in Paxton is approximately $507,000 in value. They then multiply that by the increased tax rate that results as a result of the permanent override, and that calculation comes out to approximately $166 per quarter. I think it's like $633,000, or, try that again, $633 per year.
Okay. Just to confirm.
No worries.
Thank you.
That's all we have?
That's all we have.
All right. Okay. I neglected to state at the beginning of the meeting that we do have an executive session. We have two of them scheduled tonight. The first is pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and that's really just executive session minutes that we need to approve. And then the second is pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to our litigating position if the chair so declares that it, having an, an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and I so declare. So...
I'm not sure if we need either of them.
Oh, excellent. So good. So maybe we'll just pass over both of those, and then we don't need to worry about it. I like that. Perfect. All right, so...
Do you hear that clearly? We do not have an executive session, so...
Did that make you very happy, Kirk? It's hard to hear that elation in your voice.
You don't even know. I just did a backflip and let it on my chair.
Okay. Good night. Thank you for coming. Okay, so with that...
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
You may.
Second.
All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening, folks.[1771.58]